For so and to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. Please stand for our flag salute.
(Inaudible) Ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Laingriff?
Here.
Mayor Holton?
Here. I'd like to welcome everyone, thank you for coming out tonight, and I am going to exercise my right of the prerogative of the chair that I sit in. So I'm going to open up this meeting with some things that I would like to say. Nanette, I hope you have some good shorthand skills. We know why a lot of people are here, and that's wonderful, but I want to share a few things with everyone. My father was in the 82nd Airborne Paratrooper. My father-in-law was in WWII. He was a lone gunner for 30 missions. The average missions were 15 or 10. He made 30 missions in the Brawl Territ, the Bubble. His 30th mission was not supposed to be his, but he went because someone from another group could not go. That was his last mission, and he lived the rest of his life disabled. His medals are not thrown in a junk drawer, they are displayed in my china cabinet in my dining room with honor. My Uncle John fought in the Battle of the Bulge as a paratrooper and landed in enemy territory. He was MIA. He stayed in a foxhole for three days. My other uncles that fought in WWII, my one uncle, Domenico, was captured. He was a prisoner of war, and I've seen pictures of this gorgeous handsome man, which was nothing but skin and bone. So as your mayor, and as another person that lives in this country, I am far from an anti-veteran advocate. I am so much removed that this has been hanging in my office in the county office building where I work for years. I wonder how many people that had so much to say on public social media have this hanging in their office. And before this hung in my office, I had a poem in there about the soldier and all the rights that they have given to us. When I see a veteran, and I know they're a vet because they have the baseball hat on, or the sweatshirt, or the jacket, they may think I'm crazy, but I go up to them and I actually say to a complete stranger, "Thank you. Thank you for your service." As your mayor and as a co-commissioner to Commissioner Kriebel, when he first brought this subject up, my initial reaction was no way. But I don't hide behind a keyboard. I'm a person of honesty and truth. When he brought the numbers and he did all the research, it trumped my interest. My final decision is no, not to have the change, but it trumped my interest as the Commissioner Mayor. Commissioner Kriebel did nothing wrong, and what infuriates me most is the post that I saw that how dare he bring this up, and how dare it even be thought of? Well, as every veteran in here, and I hope every good United States citizen knows, free speech, and this I'm going to read so you know I am not ad-libbing it, "Free speech is not only about your ability to speak, but the ability to listen to others and allow others' views to be heard." This is a part of the First Amendment that Commissioner Kriebel exercised. Freedom of expression is a fundamental human right. It reinforces all other human rights, allowing society to develop and progress. Commissioner Kriebel did nothing wrong. He exercised his First Amendment rights. I also want to bring to everyone's attention that we, the three of us sitting up here, took an oath when we took office. And part of the oath says that we will bear faith and allegiance to the same of the governments established in the United States of this state. And we will, under the authority of people, that we will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office according to the best of our ability, so help me God. There's a key piece in there. We swore and put that oath to represent all of the residents of Vetna, all of the residents, and that is what Commissioner Kriebel did. Now I will end my little speech with this. With a petition that probably got close to 15,000 signatures, I hope that we have to block off the VFW on Memorial Day to be at the VFW ceremony. I go to their ceremonies and the veterans' ceremonies, and there's a handful of people. And I expect to see hundreds of advocates for our veterans. That is when you go and you show your respect and honor to the sacrifice they gave and were willing to give up their life. That is all I have to say. Okay, and now, very emotional day for me.
On a lighter note.
On a lighter note, our Superintendent of Public Works who has been here for over 46 years, David Smith, is retiring. It is no secret to the people in Vetna that I have known Dave for probably close to 30 years. His wife is my second hand, my right hand, my left hand, my sanity, because she is my assistant at the county. And if I didn't have her, I probably would be, whatever. Anyway, Dave Smith loves Vetna. He wasn't born here, but he grew up here. He has dedicated over 46 years of his life. Most of the people don't realize that every snowstorm, every nor'easter, every bad weather, he was here. He wasn't here 9 to 5 or 8 to 4, he was here 24 hours around the clock, literally around the clock. He has dedicated and sacrificed and served Vetna. He is a good friend of mine. I will miss him. I know he loves the city, and I know he loves his family. I know that we'll have a very long list of things to do for him, and I'll probably give him a list myself. I will read a proclamation. Commissioner Langriff, who is his direct commissioner, will read, "We didn't get you a plaque, we got you something pretty, David." But he also loved, and he was a compassionate, empathetic supervisor to all his staff. When Dave Smith leaves Vetna as a Superintendent of Public Works, we lose an asset. We lose 46 years of knowledge, and that cannot have a price on it. The City of Vetna honors Dave Smith, whereas David Smith began working for the City of Vetna on December 7, 1971, and whereas over the years Dave Smith has held several positions with the City of Vetna Public Works Department, whereas Dave Smith was appointed as Assistant Superintendent of Public Works in 1983, and whereas Dave Smith was promoted to Public Works Superintendent in 1984, and whereas Dave Smith was promoted to Principal Public Works Manager in 1997, and whereas Dave Smith became certified in 2009 as the City of Vetna's Recycling Coordinator, and whereas Dave Smith has been a true asset for the City of Vetna, and whereas Dave Smith has faithfully served the residents of Vetna for over 46 years. Now therefore, may it be resolved by the City Board of Commissioners in recognition of Dave Smith for over 46 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Vetna City.[590.16][590.16](Applause) We're not done, David.
Dave hates this, by the way. We had to beg, borrow, and steal to get here this evening. David, as you retire, just a couple things from me is, you know, you helped me through the two years of getting into this position and learning Public Works, learning the guys of what their jobs were, what you did for the city. I just want to say thank you, and we are going to miss you. We're going to miss you and your good work, we're going to miss your stories, most of the things that broke usually on holidays, your good humor in some of those instances. You're willing just to listen to us, especially when we're facing some real obstacles. Thank you for that, thank you for all you have contributed to the city over these past almost 50 years, 46 years. I want to wish you well, and I know you plan to take it easy and spend time with Cindy and the rest of your family. I hope you enjoy yourself and find new meanings, new beginnings and meanings beyond work, because I know this was your life. This last salute, not the one we had just the other day, that was a flurry, but the storm we had, we had 17 inches. These guys were in Public Works 24/7 for those three days. Dave was there the whole time. So those guys went home, he stayed here. So that's what this position means, and that's what his position meant to this city. So retirement can be the most meaningful years of your life, you deserve all the best. We're going to be reaching out to you, don't go hide and seek. Thank you.[703.13][703.13](Applause)
We're not done, David. I know you're hating me right now.
I know.
You know Cindy will put an ugly pipe up in your ass.
Something else for me to dust.
It looks like the sand of the beach.
So to David P. Smith, in appreciation for over 46 years of loyal and dedicated service to the residents of the City of Vetna, we, the City Commissioners, present this to you in recognition of your many years of sacrifice and service.
(Cheers) David loves Vetna, he also loves black jelly beans, buttered bread, and circus peanuts.
(Laughter)
And I'm diabetic.
Former Commissioner Sandy Respetino would like to say a couple words?
Well, like you, Beth, I know Dave probably for 56, 58 years. Yep, and he truly is a Vetna guy. I had the pleasure of working hand-to-hand with him for 12 years, and when I say hand-to-hand, you guys all know it's hand-to-hand. You know, I drive by, and we did a lot of things in-house in 12 years, you know, from a big project like Re-Deppin', our boardwalk, which the guys did a great job, and honestly, with the help of Senator Gordon Lee, perching us to the grant, apply the Duma Rule, if our guys didn't do it in-house, we couldn't afford it to them. And Dave's guys did a great job under his leadership. We did numerous projects in-house, thanks to his knowledge, at the Lilick Field, at the tennis courts, and he just is a phenomenal leader, his men love him, and we know that's like any leader needs to have his men, any coach needs to have his men love them, they all love him, they work hard for him. I cherish our time together, we had a lot of good times, a lot of great laughs, and that's what you said, the city is going to miss him, and he truly is a Vetna gem for all his life here. Like, we've been together for Lilick Baseball all the way through. Dave, I want to thank you for my time, and we have Tim and Joe, also, they feel the same way. You know how we feel about you, and it was just a pleasure. And like Lance said, when I first came in, Lance, I, you know, you had to lean on him, and he's the kind of guy you can lean on.
Big learning.
He is. So Dave, I love you, and thank you, and thanks for what we did for Vetna.[890.13][890.13](Applause)
He said he always hates my name.
He smiled a bit.
He does a smile.
Cindy wanted to come up with you and little Cindy and Josh and Babs and, how about Public Works, Public Works crew? Come on up. Come on. Go.
(Inaudible)
Where's Michelle?
Here I am.
Why aren't you in the picture?
Because she didn't mention my name.
Larry's in there!
Let me tell you, Larry's in there.
Sorry, Michelle.
(Inaudible)
Public Works.
I'm sitting on my knee, God.
That's right. (Inaudible)
All right, don't move. My ex-Tim, Dave, come on down.
(Inaudible)
Vote for interview, I'm from Beach Club. (Inaudible)
Come on, Tim.
(Inaudible)
All right.
(Inaudible)
All right.
How did you get in this picture? They said Public Works, and then I was...
I'm at Public Works, people. I was at Public Works. (Inaudible)
We can't go there.
(Inaudible)
We're going to start with our department heads, there's not every department head, but several department heads will give us a brief report on their area, and then from there we will go into our workshop, which we will discuss what we will be voting on at the actual commission meeting, which will follow right after. There will be a public session after all these things are discussed on the workshop for anyone to discuss anything. So Jimmy is our code officer, correct?
One of them.
One of them. You're the head one?
Construction official code enforcement.
Construction official code enforcement, what is it?
Code enforcement officer.
Doning officer, land use administrator.
Chef.
Whatever you don't want.
Oh, by the way, your spaghetti impromptu is to die for that time.
(Inaudible) We have a couple changes to the developmental regs. One of them, our engineering department has seen a flaw to where we're allowing duplexes to be rebuilt. They thought the wording in the ordinance needed some work. That's the change to the R7 zone, to where two-family home with a certificate of non-conformity can be rebuilt as a conditional use in our seven-zone zoning. That's where it's needed, that's where we have our basement apartments and our older duplexes, and without this, they stay older duplexes instead of being demolished and rebuilt.
And what the change does, just to go a little further, it brings the code, our code into compliance with the State Land Use Law.
Correct, the State Land Use Law.
We were a little kind of off course there.
And we're introducing an ordinance tonight on that.
To amend that chapter.
Also, the State Monday stopped requiring permits for roofs and siding. We have in our regulations that a developmental permit is required under flood planning. We didn't have a fee for that. I would like to put a $50 fee on that because through substantial improvements, federal regulations and payment, we are required to keep track of the cost of construction on a home. Siding and roofing is part of that criteria on that. We used to be able to keep track of it through the permit process, now we're going to have to do it through the flood process. There should be a fee because there's time and, you know, work to be done to keep track of it, so.
And we're going to introduce an ordinance on that, too.
And the way, the policy, the way I see it is, if you obtain a permit for renovations, and siding is part of those renovations, you'll fill out the application, but you won't get that additional cost of $50. The only time that there would be a $50 cost is if there's no other permit fees or anything else involved, then you'll just pay for the flood. But if something else is involved and you're paying for a permit, it's not an additional cost for this, because you'll just fill out the form and we can track it that way. It's the ones that don't require any permits that this is needed for.
And they're both on our...
Yep, to introduce, yep, to introduce the actual ordinance.
And also, there was a small one on there, I believe it was a typo, for two families being rebuilt, it showed a rear yard setback of six foot, and it should be, I would say, 10, and this would get, I don't know if this could be done here or if that's given recommended to the planning board or not.
That's in that chapter 1 of 260?
General Regulations, that was on there.
It's not part of that change we're making tonight, it would be in addition to that?
Yes, it's in a different section.
I think it's probably a good idea, once they're introduced, to send them to the (Inaudible) to indicate their (Inaudible).
Right now, I have three applications for duplexes that are sitting on my desk waiting for this to happen, and they should be done together, because otherwise you can build a duplex right now with a six-foot rear yard setback, which is absurd.
So you have it, so it is in this section?
Yes.
All right, so...
It's in the developmental reg, or not under R7, it's toward the end of the developmental regulations.
I'm seeing that in here, that correction we made from six to 10, so it's in this ordinance?
Okay, yeah, I agree with saying it's in the R7.
So it is there, so we can do that as part of this, but we'll send it to the planning board with our comments, just to make sure it's consistent with the master plan, as our supervisor said. Thinking was going to be busy, just got the fourth or fifth thing last month. Okay.
That's it, all I had, good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Our next department head is our tax assessor, Bill Brothers. Hi, Phil.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
All right. Doing tax appeals, mostly right now. We do have PPA, professional property appraisers, on the hook for them to defend them, but last year I didn't really get a chance to review many of them, because it's my third day I had tax appeals here, so I have a better handle on what's going on. At this point, we have about 50 tax appeals, and majority of them really don't warrant a reduction, so they'll be defended. I'm going to try to reach out to them, maybe better explain the whole process about how the tax appeal works, because I'm getting all non-useable sales. I have had a lot of people come in to talk to me, to go over their property, and I've done so happily. When they come in, they have a better understanding, and they really understand how it works, and that makes me feel really good. Other than that, trying to keep up with the permits that we have, we have a lot of building going on in town, which is a good thing, so I anticipate that we'll have a lot of added assessments this year.
Wonderful, great.
You guys have any questions for me?
How much longer will we have, your help, the help of defending?
This is the last year, two is the last year.
This is the last year.
Yes.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Our next department head is our IT Director, Jim Pacanowski.
Hi, David. Just to run over the major projects going on right now. The time tracks program for the new time clocks, final forms have been submitted to the vendor, waiting to notice back from them on that. Time clock should be installed in the building by the end of the month, with an onsite visit from the vendor to set up these clocks and to begin training with a potential go-live date of mid-April. Our code enforcement program, SBL, the vendor visited today, worked with the girls for a little while, going over data conversion and making sure that what they're converting from the old stuff is going to look the way that they need to with the new program. So that looked good. Our SQL database server will be installed next week, and then work with the vendor in the next step. Online onsite training should be planned for the first week of April with potential mid-April go-live date, which Jimmy wants to make sure he has it before the 1st of May, so we're going to prep for that. The facility program for Public Works, conference call scheduled with the vendor next week. I didn't get a chance to reach out to them or even tell them, but I did talk to the vendor. We can push off that facility assessment until the end of the year, beginning of April, and still go live with the program. I just need to get them the square footage and the sizes of all the buildings, so they can at least upload that into the program, so we won't have to worry about that for the time being.
And let me just butt in, the request to say we can delay that is a budgetary issue. So we can factor that in either in next year's budget, or if we have funds available towards the end of the year, then we can move forward with it.
Right.
So I asked him to check if it would impact the ability to use this program if we waited for that part, and that's what he's saying, we can wait.
Right, yes, we can.
Then we'll be able to track different things in all of those.
That's my understanding.
Be able to track all the plumbing, electrical, facility stuff, when stuff has been done, when it needs to be done, and be able to work on the (Inaudible) for all the different areas.
So that's needed.
We're still looking probably a few months out on this program, so.
Okay.
The website, receiving information from the departments, did send out some additional information to the departments on what we're specifically looking for. Very good conversation with Commissioner Kriebel today and the vendor, really got some good ideas of how we want the site to look. I'll be working very closely... That's just the main, the main projects for now.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
For my part, just a head of the conference call with the website vendor. I had a lot of confidence in them. They seemed, I thought it was very, they seemed very competent in all areas. They're going to be hosting it as well, so it's, seems like it's a, it's a good solution.
Yeah, turns the road, turns the road again. I've been trying to push this for a long time, and we need to try to go quickly and done and stuff.
So for our part, we're going to make sure that we get photographs and all the content that we need from all the department heads as soon as possible. Because once he hits the ground running, it's, he clearly quoted as a two-month time, but we need time to, to get that information to them and absorb it to get it live.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next department head is our tax collector, Margaret Pakinowski.
Hi, we just were in the process of mailing out the water bills. We're putting the inserts into it. They're going to be due April 3rd, and the race period's till April 13th. And we're working on the PTR books with the senior citizens and stuff like that.
Great. That's it? Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Our next department head is Ernie Grass. He is the director of water and sewer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I go through a couple of things here. As far as, I'm going to go through Public Works also.
Okay, that's fine.
Public Works, go through a process. Dave's going to be leaving shortly in a month. We have a new director, Ed Svensson. Going to be meeting with him over the next course of the week. Going to be getting everything straight so we can hit the ground running when he gets here at the end of the month. To them, continue operations with Dave as we've been running well over. One of the things we've been trying to do is, is a lot of hot holes. So we've been going around Vettner on a regular basis and filling them. Unfortunately, if you drive around Vettner, it looks like we're not doing anything, but we, as we are with the weather, it just, you put the stuff in, it comes right out. And that has a lot to do with the changing temperature. But we'll keep at it and keep on doing what we have to do. Starting to talk about what's going to happen in the spring, getting ready for the summer. One of the things that we have planned to do is we're going to install some stairs that are going to be new on the boardwalk. There's going to be a set of stairs that go off of the pier. But as you walk from the boardwalk in, walk onto the pier on the left-hand side, we're going to install a set of steps that allow residents or guests to go off on either side. Right now, you can only walk to the south, so we're going to be installing them. The next set of stairs we're going to be installing is down southern part of Vettner. It's Lafayette, and that's going to give people access that don't have access right now to Lafayette or to the beach. And that'll get them to the boardwalk.
And that's what actually resolved when they came through with the new dude system down there. They put a walk over there. Lafayette stops before guests at the boardwalk.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no ramp going up. So we asked the Army Corps to put a ramp across to do their company there. They need stairs to get up to it, so.
Yeah, of course.
As the people that live on Lafayette, though, they used to be able to walk under the boardwalk.
We got a lot of plans about that.
It's insane to talk to them then. So now with the Army Corps doing what they did for us, we're going to do a set of steps and give people those on the boardwalk.
Good. Great.
Okay. Also, with the advent of the coming spring, we're going to start doing stuff on the boardwalk. One of the major things that we're going to be doing is we're going to be setting up showers on the boardwalk in preparation for people bathing in the ocean. That's going to be done, so we're going to be turning on water. We're going to be activating the fishing gear. I believe that opens up somewhere around May 1st.
April 16th.
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Mid, mid, half.
So we're going to be working on getting that up and running. Dave gave me some notes. We're going to be working on the old beach tents that the lifeguard use. We're going to be redecking them, and then once we redeck them, we're going to be putting up new ones. So that's going to be taken care of in the next week or so.
I think they started some of that. I've got two of them.
Two of them are up.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
But railings have to be.
Yeah, railings. Okay. We had successive, two past storms. We had no issues with water and sewer, which was a great thing. I'm bringing stormwater under water and sewer, which is going to do two things. One, it's going to work on the flooding, some of the issues we have in Vettner. We're going to go through one end of the town to the other. We're going to hit every single storm drain, and we're going to clean it out. That way, the water goes into a storm drain, it doesn't flood, so we're going to try to work on that. That's going to be a long process. That's probably going to be, I'm saying six months to the end of the year to get them all. But we're going to do that, just start small, and then work through the entire system. So.
Excuse me, Ernie. While you're talking about that, the Calvert and Fulton, that drain, the county went out there again. They did, but Jerry mentioned there's bigger issues, so that is something you probably want to reach out to Peterson. Right in front of Waddle. That drain, that.
Calvert and Dorset, I think.
Yeah, Calvert and Dorset. I'm sorry, Fulton, I'm sorry. Calvert and Dorset, that area.
It floods.
It floods. Marita, they've been out there, so.
Which.
The county, it's, there's something else, I don't know. I'm not that, but it's something we might.
I don't know if it's the county issues.
Either do I, that's why.
Make sure it's not the county.
I don't think so either.
We love the county issues.
I think they said it was theirs.
I'm not sure. I think it's deeper down, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Ernie. You've mentioned drains, so.
Yeah, no problem. With the advent of the new, the new year, one of the things we have to do on an annual basis is that we have to put out what is called a CCR. It's called the Consumer Confidence Report. Water purveyors have had probably put them out for the last 12, 15 years now. I'm going to be putting together vendors. Basically, what this is, it's a collection of all last year's data for water quality. Gets put into a little booklet, and then we make it available on the internet. Jim Pakinowski's been a great help in the past, and we're going to be doing the same thing. So that should be the next month or so. And I'll also be working with Margaret on that, too. And that's what we'll work through next month. Water allocation is now another annual report. It's basically the health of your system. It's not really for the residents. It's more as a report card to the state of New Jersey. Talks about how much we pumped, what we did as far as work in the system. And that's going to be done by the end of August, but I'm starting on that now because that's a very involved report. So I'm going to let you know, we'll be working on that. Last time I was up here a month ago, we were talking about installing some valves in Vettner. If we were to have a main break in the city of Vettner, I want to be able to isolate it as much as possible. And I'm looking over the maps. That doesn't seem to be really much the case, and I want to strategically put some valves in on Atlantic Avenue and on Vettner Avenue. And by splitting the system, we'll reduce the amount of folks affected if we should ever have a severe, large main break. I've met with two vendors, and we're going to be getting prices, and I'll be resending that to you when I get the data. It's going to be worth every dollar we do because the less residents that are out of water, the better off, that have water, the better off we are if we were to have a large main break. And that's where our largest means are on Vettner and Atlantic. One of the things we're going to be doing for the rest of the year is we're going to be changing out our coordination system. And I'm working with our staff engineer on that. Let's move forward.
Let's actually count the bid. Can we ask our engineering consultants to?
Yes, we can receive some prices.
We received some prices, and Roger and I will be talked about that tomorrow and see where we're going to go with that.
Good. And that's a state mandated change to our system?
Yes. We have to change three coordination systems. Well, eight, which is over by the ball field. Well 10, which is over by the school. And then we have our system at Public Works that we have to change. Lastly, administrative, really, most of this is with Jim Pakinowski. You mentioned facility do. I'm very interested in that. That's absolutely required for drinking water in the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water, having an asset management system. And like you stated before, it will track our work orders, will eventually monitor all of our stock as far as consumables and our valves, hydrants, and everything else. So I'm going to be working with Jim very closely on that. And the other part of that is the asset management system is all material that goes with that. And then lastly is, I'll be working with Jim as far as water and sewer is concerned, changes to the website. And I'm working with him over the next couple of weeks going with that. That's what I have for you.
Thank you. A lot of good stuff. Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next department head is our CEO, Toro.
CFO.
Did I say CEO?
I just got promoted.
You got promoted? Change the salary, guy. CFO, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I just, I didn't do each a financial update. The first page is just the cash that we have on hand currently. I'm happy to say that we were able to open an investment account with $3 million with the New Jersey ARM. It's the Asset Rebate Management Program. The program is very highly rated. It's rated AAAM. And what the M designates is money market accounts or accounts that are principal stable. The, the funds are in an investment pool, and they're very safe. They have superior capacity to maintain the principal, and they limit our exposure to risks.
Have you ever done this before?
No, this is, this is our.
I mean, we've never had money to do an investment.
Yeah.
Well, this isn't this money that's in our, are from the prepayments from taxes?
No, no, this is just money. As you see from the first page of the reports that I gave you, we have about $20 million deposited at Ocean First Bank. I took $3 million of that and put in the New Jersey ARM investment pool.
Great.
The funds are liquid daily, so if we needed to pay bills, I can do just an ACH transfer or just a wire transfer to get the money out.
So it's like a checking account, a lot better interest.
Yes, it's 1.3, which doesn't sound like a lot to some people, but it is a lot in this day and age.
That's great.
Yeah. You also have revenue reports you have for the two major funds that we have, the water sewer or utility fund and the current fund. They might not mean a lot right now because we don't have a budget yet, so these are just temporary budget numbers on the budget accounts table. So you have four reports in all. You have two revenue reports and two expenditure reports. It just shows you where, a summary of each account and where we are as far as spending is concerned. Last month was a little busy, so, you know, I didn't get to all the things that I said I would get to, but those things are now on the list for April. Our auditing firm started our 2017 audit. I believe they finished the field work, and they're working on reviewing all of the information that they gathered to see where we are, where we could do better on. And I believe that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Toro. Good job.